I'd like to call the order to meet the meeting of the Village Board for May 11th, 2021. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. For its stance, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hold on one second. Figures a phone ringing. All right. Village Clerk, would you please call the roll?
President D. Simone?
Here.
Trustee Carmona?
Here.
Trustee Franz?
Here.
Trustee Frye?
Here.
Trustee Lomax?
Here.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Here.
Trustee Perez?
Here.
That's seven.
At this time, we'll move to the public hearing. Proposed annexation agreement between the Village of Bensonville and 16W 688 Second Avenue. We will now move to this public hearing on a proposed annexation agreement between that address and the Village of Bensonville, parcel number, parcel number 03-23-103-005. Village Clerk, for the record, would you please call the roll to open the public hearing on the annexation agreement for 16W 688 Second Avenue, parcel number 03-23-103-05?
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
If any persons would like to speak during the public hearing on the annexation agreement, I ask that you please approach the podium and state your name and comment. Is there any comment on the annexation?
Yes, first we have Barbara from 4N 665 Ridgewood.
So do you just go right up to that podium and speak?
Oh, my name is Barbara Ladarcik. I'm at 4N 665 Ridgewood. The property in question is across the street from me. Ten years, ten years ago, when my husband and my late husband and I bought the house, we searched far and wide when we were living, moving from Park Ridge. Found the street because of its aesthetic with the houses with the large lots. And they're going to put Chicago-type houses, little tiny houses, close together, and there's no lot, and it changes the whole aesthetic. Thank you.
Next, we have Carrie from 4N 665 Ridgewood.
I'm Carrie Casiba, 4N 665 Ridgewood. That was my mother. She's the owner of the house. My husband and I, who also wanted to speak, are purchasing the home. We just sold our home in Park Ridge. I'm a Realtor. I've been a Realtor in Park Ridge for over 20 years. I've built and developed, my husband and I, in Chicago and other suburbs. We're extremely concerned for, like my mother was saying, the aesthetics of the neighborhood. But when overbuilding on these lots, this has happened all over in many, many communities, so it could bring general revenue to the city. It also directly negatively affects the land value of the existing homes. Sorry, I have asthma. So that is a major concern. The property that you're talking about, about annexing, that property has two other homes on that lot that are 50-foot. To me, if you were going to push anything, those, to put two houses on that lot, I can understand where the city would find that acceptable. On the Ridgewood property, on the corner of Ridgewood, 400 Ridgewood, it would be extremely damning to everyone's property value on that block. You want to talk? And that's it.
Thank you for your comment.
Next, we have Tom from 4N 665 Ridgewood.
I'm not opposed to putting a house there, but not two houses. That lot floods. I know you guys are gonna do stuff to try and make that not happen, but that lot is underwater every time it rains. I don't need my property values ruined by this. It's gonna do that. You guys are probably making more money at it because of the taxes, but what's that doing for me? You know, I have enough problems with flooding as it is, and we don't need any more. That lot's underwater. But two houses there is gonna screw up the neighborhood. It's not gonna look right. That's one of the prettiest blocks in that area. And if you put two houses there, and another two houses there, they're gonna start doing this all over the place. And maybe that's what you guys want. I don't know. But if that's what's gonna happen, then I'm gonna move out of this. You know, because that's not why I'm here. I moved here because there were single houses on wide lots. All the neighbors are great. But, you know, that's also the same house, the one across the street, where we had to put up for 10 years. We had to put up with the slumlord that owned it. Because there was a family in there and another family. The police were there constantly. The guy was never there doing anything, and it's the same family. I'm opposed to it.
Thank you, Tom. Thank you for your comment.
Next, we have Paul Guarino from the Bensonville Fire District Protection District Number One.
My name is Paul Guarino. I am the president of the Bensonville Fire District Number One. And it is my understanding that there are currently two houses on the property. And eventually, we are going to take lots, divide them, and put other houses on these divided lots. I just wanted clearly understood that while the property is being annexed to Bensonville, any revenues for fire protection go to Bensonville Fire District Number One. And as far as you're, you know, you're talking about water, get ahold of the Army Corps of Engineer maps. And they will show you the flooding. They will show you the 100-year flooding and the 500-year flooding. I built a house in 1969 above the 100-year floodplain and have not taken one drop of water. And I live in a neighborhood that floods. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Next, we have Sandra Granger of 4N 635 Ridgewood Avenue.
Okay. Thanks, Sandra.
The next public comment we have was filed online this afternoon by a Jan Kardashian, Kardashian. And her comment reads, her address is 16W 657 Second Avenue. Her comment reads, "My brother and I, we are now owners of the property of 16W 657 Second Avenue, Bensonville, Illinois. We are strongly against subdividing the land and building two houses because it will lower our property and land value tremendously. Also, it makes the area very congested and ruins the appearance of the block. It will be a huge eyesore. It is not accepted, it is not acceptable to approve the division of the two lots, 400 Ridgewood and 16W 688 Second Avenue. It is better interest for the whole community of the city of Bensonville to keep the property value up, but not lower it down." Those are all the submitted public comments and online comments I have received.
Counselor Subak, did you have comment? Is there any others? Is there any further discussion on the proposed? Counselor Subak has a comment. All right.
For the record, my name is Marshall Subach, S-U-B-A-C-H. I represent the petitioner, Sophie Ganima. She is a resident of Bensonville. She is not a developer or professional builder that's looking to build houses and make money and get out of town. She is one of your residents. She has raised her family here. The goal behind these, the annexation, is to annex the property into Bensonville. We are asking later on for you to vote on a two-lot subdivision. The two-lot subdivision will meet all the requirements for R3 zoning. Each of the lots will be on, from Second Avenue, will be 50 by 160. They're gonna meet all the R3 requirements. We're gonna meet the stormwater requirements. Directly to the north is, there are two houses already. These, both of these lots that we're gonna be talking about are vacant lots right now. As staff will tell you, when a lot is vacant, it becomes somewhat of a maintenance issue because of, you know, rolling trash and garbage. We're looking to have families move into these homes. We're not looking to build McMansions on these houses. Staff recommends approval. The CDC voted unanimously to approve this. Part of your comprehensive plan talks about annexing more properties into Bensonville. We're meeting that goal of the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan also provides for that Bensonville has to do things to bring in new housing stock. This is not gonna lower the values of any properties in the area. When you build new houses, the housing stock values go up because those new values and the new construction are gonna be higher. Because Ganima is looking to have her family move back into these houses. At least one of them, her daughter wants to come back. She's a graduate of Penn High School and wants to live back in the community. So we are respectfully asking you to annex this property into Bensonville, and then later on, approve the two-lot subdivisions for 16W 688 Second Avenue and 400 Ridgewood. As lots on 400 Ridgewood, each of those lots are gonna be 60 by 160 or 9,600 square feet, which is well beyond the R3 requirements. And I'm here to answer any questions. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Subak.
Is there any further discussion on the proposed annexation?
Is there?
Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Can you please take, go to the podium, state your name and your address, please?
Michael Plumeri, 16W 656 Third Avenue.
Please, please spell your last name.
P is in Peter, L-U-M-E-R-I.
Thank you.
We are downstream of this development on Ridgewood. When we receive a four-inch rain, we flood. This village floods. This village needs a lot of help with flooding. I brought proof with me today. I didn't realize that everyone would be here. That I wanted to show you photos of the last three major floods we've had. Okay? We've got the county involved. They've come out and inspected their pipes, Addison Township's looking into what they can do as well. We're opposed to these, we're not opposed to new homes, but we're opposed to runoff. At least downstream at Third and Ridgewood, and also on Briar Lane. The way the water flows through our community with a four-inch rain, we do not want any more runoff until the flooding issue is addressed first. And I'll be honest with you, I would be prepared to go to court every day if I need to, to file stop work order on this project. Until the flooding concerns are taken care of. Those are my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Plumeri. Yes, please go to the podium, state your name and your address, please.
My name is Laura Charbonneau, C-H-A-R-B-O-N-E-A-U. I live at 4 North 602 Ridgewood. I live at the corner Second House End from Third Avenue on Ridgewood. I have the lowest lot on the block. When it rains, I flood. I've missed work because we can't get out of our house. We are, it's a moat around us. It's causes angst, it causes anguish, it causes severe anxiety. I agree with Mike. This area floods, and it floods a lot, and it's worse. We've been here 29 years in November, and it's gotten progressively worse. What some people might cause, call a maintenance issue, I call a nice open lot that collects water. And I like that. And so I'm not opposed to building homes, but squeezing homes, more homes that should be on a lot, which will negatively, there's no question, will negatively affect those of us at the other end, isn't right. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Ms. Charbonneau. Is there any other public comment? You can take your turn. Please go to the podium, state your name and your address.
Sandra Granger and I too live on Ridgewood Avenue, 4 North 635 Ridgewood. And our lot has flooded too. I'm low also. And every time it rains, we get rain in our backyard. The last time we had a major rain, it was almost up to our patio doors. We went out and got sandbags to put so it didn't come in our patio because of the flooding on our street. I said, "I'm not opposed either to the new homes. I think that'll be a good thing. I'm just opposed to putting two homes on each one of those lots because of the flooding issue. And I think it will negatively affect our home values." I've lived there for, I've lived there since 1976. When I purchased the lot, I wasn't looking for being an unincorporated or not. I was just looking for a lot. I was 20-some years old, and we were looking to build, and I said, when then we found out it was floodplain area after we started. And it really hasn't improved that much since. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Anyone else looking to speak during the public hearing? Your Honor, I see none.
Is there a motion to close the public hearing on the proposed annexation agreement?
You have a motion.
Is there a second?
You have a second.
There being a motion, a second, is there any discussion? You want to do a roll call on this, Evan, instead of an eye vote?
Yes, please. Roll call.
Can you please call the roll? Nancy, you're muted.
Yeah, yeah. Hold on, hold on, hold on. Okay. Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries and the public hearing is closed. We will proceed with the original order of business on the regular meeting agenda. Right now, we will move to public comment. Does anyone wish to address the board? If so, please approach the podium and state your name. Do we have public comment? We have one online public comment this evening that, from Stephen Knoll of 245 Williams Street. Stephen writes, "I am just a warehouse worker, and I just want to thank everyone for their help with the parking issue we were having in front of our truck dock. In a time with social, economic, and health concerns and problems, I just wanted to say thank you for your time you took to help our company, especially Deputy Chief Julie." Are there any other further online comments? There are none, President. This will conclude our public comment. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from the April 27th, 2021 Village Board meeting?
You have a motion.
Is there a second?
You have a second.
Are there any modifications to the minutes? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries and the minutes are approved. There is no warrant tonight. There are no items on the consent agenda. There is a resolution supporting the restoration of the LGDF revenue. Is there a motion to approve this resolution?
You have a motion.
Do I have a second on the motion?
You have a second.
There being a motion, a second, any discussion?
Thank you, Your Honor. So this seems like it's becoming an annual issue with the state of Illinois trying to attack our local government distributive fund. This is the portion of income tax that the state collects on behalf of municipalities. In 2011, they reduced that amount from 10% down to 6.06%. And again, they're looking to reduce it by an additional 10%. So this resolution tonight, we will send off with other municipalities around the area. We will send down to Springfield to let them know that we oppose additional cuts to LGDF. If this 10%, additional 10% reduction goes through, we are looking at a unbudgeted loss of $200,000. $200,000 is, I hope you guys know, we may go a long way, so that's something that we would actually feel in our budget. We did not expect this to happen, so hopefully we can dissuade the legislators down in Springfield to not go through with this 10% reduction. So this resolution addresses those items.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries and the resolution is approved. Under Community and Economic Development Ordinance approving the annexation agreement between 16 West 688 Second Avenue and the Village of Bensonville, Illinois. Is there a motion to approve the ordinance?
You have a motion.
Do I have a second?
You have a second.
There being a motion, a second, any discussion? Mr. Weiger?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the board, members of the public, this is, of course, the item we just had the public hearing on a few moments ago. Just as a refresher, it is the northwest corner of Second or Washington Street and Ridgewood, two blocks east of Route 83, two blocks west of Church Road, and a couple houses south of Johnson School. It is a 16,000 square foot property, 100 by 160, surrounded on three sides by the Village of Bensonville, northwest and south. The east side is unincorporated Addison Township. It is contiguous to the village, and we recommend approval of the annexation agreement.
Any other discussion? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries and ordinance is passed. Number two is an ordinance approving the annexation of 16W 688 Second Avenue into the Village of Bensonville, Illinois. Is there a motion to approve this ordinance?
You have a motion.
Do I have a second on the motion?
You have a second.
Being a motion, a second, any discussion?
Weiger, any additional?
Nothing additional, sir.
Any other discussion from the board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries and the ordinance is passed. Number three is an ordinance approving a zoning map amendment and preliminary plat of subdivision at 16W 688 Second Avenue, Bensonville, Illinois. Is there a motion to approve the ordinance?
You have a motion.
Do I have a second?
You have a second.
Being a motion, a second, any discussion?
Mr. Weiger?
Of course, this is the same piece of property. As Mr. Subak said during the public hearing, the proposal here is to rezone it from R1, which is a statute when you annex, it's annexed as R1. Rezone this property to R3, which is the surrounding properties that are in the village, north and west are zoned R3. The properties will meet the size and width requirements of the R3 district and, pardon me. And as Mr. Subak said, the proposal is to meet the bulk requirements of the R3 district as well. So we don't envision any variations necessary for the lot sizes or the homes that may eventually be constructed here. As he said, these lots are 8,000 square feet over the 6,000 square foot minimum for that R3 district. We recommend approval.
Any other discussion from the board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries and ordinance is passed. Number four is an ordinance approving a zoning map amendment and preliminary plat of subdivision as for, at 400 South Ridgewood, Bensonville, Illinois. Is there a motion to approve the ordinance?
You have a motion.
Is there a second?
You have a second.
Being a motion, a second, any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, this is the southwest corner of Second Washington Street, Washington Avenue, I should say, and Ridgewood. It's 400 Ridgewood is the property address. It's already been annexed in the Village of Bensonville many, many years ago. It's a 19,200 square foot vacant site. It's 120 feet wide in the north-south direction. The proposal is to rezone that from R1 to R3 and subdivide it for two, two properties of 9,600 square feet each, both 60 feet wide, both exceeding the R3 requirements and meeting the R3 setbacks. We've had a lot of conversation from our residents here on this property. I don't know if there's anything further for me to add other than the CDC recommended approval of this rezoning into a lot subdivision, and the staff does as well.
Any other discussion from the board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries and ordinance is passed. Under Finance is a resolution authorizing a contract with CDS Office Technologies for the Maintenance of Printers within the Village from May 1st, 2021 through April 30th, 2022, in the aggregate amount of $13,749.84. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
You have a motion.
Do I have a second?
You have a second.
Being a motion, a second, any discussion?
Much to staff's chagrin, I've tried to hobble along with some copiers at Village Hall for far too long. So we've come to a point where we need to buy a new copier. This exceeds our $10,000 limit, so Julie, do you want to go through the process we went through?
Actually, the printer that we're purchasing is like a $7,000 printer, and I think it's within your limits. But this is the contract for the maintenance on all the printers. Last, about a year and a half ago, we did an RFP to have all of our printers maintained under one cost per month. We want to extend it for one year. This company, CDS, was the winner of the bid by far, and we have savings as a result, and they've been a good company. So we want to extend the contract for another year until next April.
Any other discussion from the board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries and resolution is approved. We do not have a report for the Police Department or Public Works. Under Recreation, there's a resolution authorizing a facility usage license agreement with HHD Hockey. Is there a motion to approve this resolution?
You have a motion.
Do I have a second?
You have a second.
You have a second.
There being a motion, a second, any discussion?
Mr. Flynn?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you. HHD Hockey is operated by Christian Humira, who is most recently named the Hockey Director for the Chicago Mission Hockey Program. He approached us earlier this year about purchasing ice time over the summer. He's going to be taking Monday through Thursday ice slots from 8:00 AM to 9:00 PM. It's not really gonna affect any of our programming at the facility, and it's gonna bring in an additional $148,000 to our annual budget.
Thank you. Any other discussion from the board? Nice work. Can you call the roll, please?
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries and resolution is approved. Presidential remarks, I have a couple. With COVID-19 cases trending downwards and the start of the bridge transition phase set to begin this Friday, I am excited to announce that the return of our Independence Day celebration, as well as the Music in the Park concerts this summer. So please join us at Redmond Recreational Complex on July 4th for live entertainment, food, drinks, and fireworks show. Musical entertainment will begin at 6:00 PM, and the fireworks will begin approximately 9:30 PM. Oh, you know, did I skip something?
Yeah, we've got a proclamation for Public Works Week.
All right, let me, it's.
You can finish this one, and we'll get to it.
I was gonna say, it's reversed on here. I'm sorry, guys. I saw Mahul in the background on the corner of my eye. I apologize. So let's go back to one more fun thing. Also, Music in the Park will return to downtown Bensonville from 7:30 PM to 9:30, beginning July 14th through August 25th. So please see the village website and the upcoming July-August edition of the Bensonville Community Newsletter for details on both. So I'll pause my village president's remarks, and we'll move to the proclamation designating the week of May 16th through the 22nd, 2021 as National Public Works Week in the Village of Bensonville, Illinois. Would the deputy clerk please read the proclamation? National Public Works Week Proclamation, May 16th to the 23rd, 2021. Quote, "Stronger together," end quote. Whereas public work professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of the Village of Bensonville. And whereas these infrastructure, facilities, and services cannot be provided without the dedicated efforts of public work professionals who are engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government, and the private sector who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. And whereas, it is in the public interest for citizens, civil leaders, and children of the Village of Bensonville to gain knowledge of and to maintain an ongoing interest in understanding of the importance of public works and public work programs in the respective communities. And whereas, the year 2021 marks the 61st Annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association/Canadian Public Works Association. Now therefore, Frank D. Simone, President of the Village of Bensonville, does hereby designate the week of May 16th to the 22nd, 2021 as National Public Works Week. He urges all citizens to join with him and the American Public Works Association/Canadian Public Works Association and government agencies in activities, events, and ceremonies designated to pay tribute to our public work professionals, engineers, managers, and employees, and to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protecting our national health, safety, and quality of life. Adopted this 11th day of May 2021, or 2021. Is there a motion in support of the proclamation?
You have a motion.
Do I have a second?
You have a second.
Being a motion, a second, any discussion?
I just want to thank Mahul and Joe and your staff for all the hard work that you guys put into it.
I just want to thank Mahul, uh, and Joe and your staff for all the hard work that you guys put into it. Um, you guys are not just public works guys, you're public works professionals. Professionalism that we get and the compliments that we get on you guys is weekly. So keep up the good work and thank you so much on behalf of the village.
Thank you. Can we have a roll call, please?
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries. Back to the presidential announcements. So the, I also want to recognize National Police Week. This week, we proudly, proudly recognize our Police Department as we celebrate National Police Week. On behalf of our board and the entire Bensonville community, I would like to take this opportunity to thank, to thank the brave men and women who make up the Bensonville Police Department. Thank you for your dedication, your professionalism, and high standards, which has even earned accreditation from the Commission on Accreditation for Law Enforcement Agencies. Your devotion and your commitment to our community is what makes Bensonville a safe place to work, play, and raise a family. Thank you very much for what you guys do. That will conclude, uh, village president's reports. Do we have a village manager's report?
We do have a couple items, Jana. Thank you. If you've driven around town, you've likely seen our hydrant flushing signs. Uh, we are, over the next three weeks, we're going to flush all one thousand two hundred and thirty-eight of our fire hydrants in town. So, uh, that's a preventative maintenance thing and improves the, uh, water quality as well as operation of the fire hydrants. And then finally, the prescription box is the safe way of disposing unwanted medications or prescriptions. The village is a drop box that is located inside of the Bensonville Police Station. Please feel free to drop off any unwanted medications. This service is completely free. Uh, by disposing of medication properly, we keep them out of the waste stream and also out of the hands of people who shouldn't have that medication. So it's a win-win. That's a little initiative we started a couple of years ago and it is used often. So I just want to make sure everyone's aware that at the police station, you can dispose of your medications. That concludes my report, Mr. President.
Do we have a village attorney's report?
I have no report, Mr. President.
Is there any unfinished business come before the board tonight?
Seeing none.
Is there any new business come before the board tonight?
Seeing none.
Do we have a need for executive session?
There is no need, Mr. President.
So is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
You have a motion.
Do I have a second?
You have a second.
Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?[1790.59]